Next, we're going to move on to student and staff reporting procedures. I think that's Director Anderson and Director Hutchinson.
President Wagers, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dennis and Deputy Superintendent Roberts, thank you for allowing us the opportunity this evening to come before you to discuss a topic that is a sensitive one, but one that we know is certainly important to each of you, as it is to us, and certainly all of our colleagues and the entire community. I'd like to begin by talking about what we're not going to do this evening. We are not here to make excuses, nor are we here to diminish or minimize any stories of current reformer students. What we would like to do, however, is provide you with an overview of our reporting procedures for students, parents and staff, as well as an overview of Title IX and the supportive measures that go along with that. And then we'll end with a look at some of the things we've done to get us to where we are today, as well as next steps of direction we'll be taking moving forward. Before we delve too deeply into this, I'd like to just pause for a moment and remind everybody that all Idahoans are required to report child abuse, neglect and abandonment. As educators, we are mandated reporters, and we take that very seriously, as you can imagine. So, we didn't feel it would be appropriate to get into any specific circumstances, even if we tried to make them somewhat random in nature. We'd risk the potential of inadvertently outing somebody or possibly triggering based on past experiences. So, what we will do is more in a general sense, take you through the processes and procedures. So, if a student experiences something and they come in to report it, what happens next? Well, first of all, it can be reported by students, parents or staff. That report typically begins, not always, but most of the time, at the building level with a trusted adult where the student comes in and reports to a teacher, or more often than not, a counselor or possibly an administrator. Director Anderson will talk about some of the policies that often come into play in these circumstances.
Good. Good evening. I wanted to start this by saying that we wanted to give you an outline of kind of all the different policies that could potentially guide the path that we would take if a person comes to us with a concern. But I think one of the really important things you need to understand is that there's never a point where we say, "I'm sorry, there's not a policy that covers that. We will not be taking care of you." We would take care of a concern no matter what. There's just different pathways that can happen. So, I'm not going to go into these in depth, but just to give you kind of like the 20,000-foot view. So, 3211 is civil rights grievance. A lot of this falls under protected classes. So, for instance, if you feel like you've been harassed because of race, this policy would protect you. 3231 bullying, hazing and harassment is exactly what it sounds like, systemic or persistent pervasive harassing, bullying. A good example of this would be cyberbullying. You know, someone's getting repeatedly harassed online. Unfortunately, that's something that a lot of our schools are working to counteract. 3232 is sexual harassment, and so this is where Title IX falls in, in this category. I would say this also is pretty much like a big umbrella of unwelcome sexual conduct. And so, there's a couple of different categories of that, and Jason's going to talk about that in a little bit more detail when we talk about Title IX. And then 3237 is assault and battery. So, sometimes it's just straight up somebody putting hands on another person and hurting them. And so, all of these policies could apply if someone comes and reports something that's been a concern. So, what happens next? Generally, these are going to come in at the building level. So, the building administrator is going to conduct an initial investigation. It's just enough to get a sense of what the actual situation or concern is. They will be able to immediately implement supportive measures. So, for instance, let's say I'm a principal and someone comes and says, "You know, I am getting harassed every day out when I'm waiting for the bus after school." I can immediately put in supportive measures while we're trying to get a sense of what's going on. So, those things might be, "Well, you know what? You're going to wait in the office until we know the bus is out there and then we'll send you out." Anything like that is considered a supportive measure. You don't have to wait till an investigation is over to implement those measures. If the alleged violation includes, or we feel like it follows, under 3231 or 3237, generally what's going to happen is an area director is going to get heads up about that, but the building administrator is going to be the person that conducts that full investigation. Often, there'll be supportive measures put into place. These things happen usually pretty quickly, and so there'll be also consequences that are administered. So, a fight, that would fall into this category. A vast majority of complaints that come to a building administrator are going to be resolved with an initial investigation and the implementation of supportive measures. And this can range from, on a elementary playground, it could be friendship vacations, where when I'm out on the playground, I have to be on the blacktop when the person that I've had a problem with is on the field, and then we flip-flop. Up to, you know, things like travel plans at a high school where if I've been harassing Jason, Jason gets a plan through the building where he doesn't have to see me in his school day when he's going from class to class. So, a lot of times, putting those supportive measures into place pretty much resolves the issue, and the student feels comfortable and safe. And that's the whole point of all of this, is for the student to feel like they can go to class and learn and not be distracted. Less than 10% of parents, students and staff file a formal complaint, but what happens when that happens? So, this is where, again, we're going to take care of these concerns, but they may take different paths depending on what the situation is. So, for instance, if the formal complaint involves sexual harassment, remember how I said unwelcome sexual conduct, an area director and the human resources director are going to be notified. Often, we just really encourage a principal, like if it feels like it's going in this direction, just call us and let's talk about the situation. We'll decide if it does warrant this. Then we take that, escalate that up to the district level. So, Title IX claims use a procedure that's in policy. It's 3230, 3232R. Other formal complaints of sexual harassment use 3211. We're not going to get too much in the weeds of that, but Jason will explain to you why some fall under one umbrella and some fall under the other. Either of those policies require a formal complaint. If a person chooses not to do a formal complaint, we still investigate, we still put in supportive measures, we still administer consequences. It's just a different path. And we can talk a little bit about why someone might choose not to file a formal complaint, because there are some reasons. Supportive measures are put into place during the investigation, and again, I gave you some examples of those. We'll talk about those a little bit more, but those happen before the investigation's even concluded. The idea of that is to keep the student in school. So, you want to put those into place, you know, immediately. Additional supportive measures and consequences can also be administered based on the outcome of the investigation, too.
Okay, so Director Anderson referenced Policy 3211. That is our civil rights grievance policy. And the reason that's really important, among others, is that, let's say something maybe happens and does not fall under the guidelines for Title IX. So, maybe it's something that occurred outside of our district programs or activities, or maybe it's something that wasn't related to sex or gender discrimination, harassment and so forth. We go to our civil rights grievance policy, and we can address a lot of things through that policy that might not otherwise fall under Title IX. So, you'll see, as we talk about civil rights grievance policy in the process here, and then later describe the process for Title IX, you'll see some commonality in the investigative measures and things that take place, starting with when that report comes in at the building level, again, most of the time. The first thing that happens is the administrator, after conducting just an initial investigation, will contact us, us meaning the Director of Human Resources and an area director, to provide information as to what they've found and that it might be a civil rights grievance. At that point in time, we make sure that through the administrator, we're providing the parents and students with options, that they can choose to pursue an informal resolution, or they might choose to pursue a formal complaint. Now, if, when we say an informal resolution, informal does not mean less important or less significant. It just means that it's a resolution process that's taking place outside of or prior to a formal complaint being issued. So, if there is not an informal resolution that can be reached, or if the reporting party just wishes to pursue a formal complaint immediately, they can do so by sending the nature of the grievance, along with their requested remedy, and they sign and date that and send that to the Director of Human Resources. At that point in time, an investigation, a full investigation at the district level ensues with a final report of investigation, along with recommended outcomes, including additional supportive measures if necessary, as well as any potential consequences. And speaking of reporting or supportive measures, just to reiterate what Director Anderson said, those are put in place at the very beginning upon receiving the report, when we're in that informal resolution phase. Those interim supportive measures go into place right away. Okay, so now, let's back up again and assume that a complaint comes in or a concern comes in from a student that is based in harassment or discrimination based on sex or gender, or possibly sexual assault. Those are things that would typically fall under Title IX or could, most likely. And the complaint process for Title IX is really pretty straightforward. There are several ways that a complaint can be issued, via telephone, sent to the email address, which is listed there, titlenincoordinator@boysyschools.org, which is also on our website, or traditional mail works. And we have a reporting, a sexual misconduct reporting form that is posted on our website, and that we send the direct link out to our parents and students as well. And so, if we can go to the next slide, this will provide you more of a graphic or a snapshot of the process itself. And so, once again, if you start on the far left with kind of pink arrow there, when information is received at the building level, they reach out to the Title IX coordinator and say, "Hey, here's what we found. We might have a Title IX case here." At that point in time, as the Title IX coordinator, I take that information, analyze it to determine whether or not it looks like it could indeed be a Title IX case. Assuming it is, then at that point in time, we reach out to the parties involved to make sure they understand, again, that they have the right to not only file a formal complaint with us, but also with outside agencies, including law enforcement, should they choose to do so. At that point in time, we also begin the process of instituting those interim supportive measures, and all parties are put on notice that a formal complaint has been filed. Now, once that formal complaint has been filed, there is an investigation, so all parties receive a notice of investigation. During that process, the complainant is interviewed, the respondent is interviewed, along with any witnesses that might have information to share. Following the investigation, there's an investigative report that's produced to all parties involved. Those parties then have a 10-day window to comment before that report becomes final. Once that report is finalized, it is then put forth to the decision-maker, and the decision-maker uses the information from that report to render a decision, which typically would include additional supportive measures if necessary, along with any consequences that might be relevant to the situation. You'll notice the blue arrow along the bottom, and what that's showing is that along the path throughout the investigation, up to the point of the final decision, if the complainant chose to pursue an informal resolution, that is still an option for them at any point in the process. And now, Director Anderson will talk a little bit about some of the things we've done in the Boise School District.
Okay. So, it's interesting, because when I grew up, Title IX did not mean this. Title IX was more about, like, did we have the equal number of male sports teams versus female sports teams? But in the past, oh, I would say six or seven years, we've learned more and more about this. And the basic premise of this is ensuring access to your education, equal access to your education. And so, I think that's a really important piece of this. When we started understanding how people were applying the federal regulations, we sent teams to get trained. That was about five, six years ago, and we were really early adopters. So, we may have been the first, if not one of the first K-12 institutions to send folks to get trained in Title IX. And then subsequently, a lot of our policies and procedures and practices have been used as models for other districts. We had to learn along the way, and we're still learning, but we're pretty proud of the fact that we really wanted to lean into this. And I would say, like, my own personal reflection on it is that despite the fact that it's federal laws, regulations, and sometimes it feels really impersonal, it gives us a toolkit that I think empowers us, especially like with the supportive measures. It gives us the feeling that we can immediately intervene on a student's behalf and give them what they need so that they can feel comfortable coming to school. They're always going to be in the driver's seat, that victim, and I think that's super important. And I feel like that's a benefit that Title IX has given us. So, that's been really good. So, how does Title IX actually work in practice? Oftentimes, it's going to be a counselor that's the first point of contact, mostly because that tends to be someone who's a trusted adult. They would, of course, take that to their administrators. But I will tell you that often, reports don't lead to a formal Title IX complaint, because either the families choose not to do that, or we need to address it with one of those other pathways, because perhaps, you know, something happened outside of our programs, or it doesn't technically count as sexual harassment. But again, doesn't mean we don't deal with it. It just means the pathway is different. Families sometimes choose not to file a formal complaint, because we always try to minimize the footprint. Like, we try to make sure that the victim and the number of times they have to talk about what the incident may have been is as small as we can make it, that footprint. Sometimes a family will say, "As long as our student doesn't have to see that kid at school, that's what we want." And we can make that happen right away. But again, the victim is in the driver's seat for that. Now, the difference there is if there's something that we feel is against the law, then the SRO or law enforcement, if they don't have a school resource officer, is immediately put in the loop for that. But again, the victim, we try to put the victim's choices and wishes in kind of center stage for all of these. Again, supportive measures are provided regardless of whether it counts as Title IX or not, and all of the reports we take seriously. And then Jason's going to talk about kind of where we've been and where we're going.
Thank you. So, we've done quite a bit, as Director Anderson shared, over the last several years, starting with an intensive training for all administrators and counselors in Title IX. We also have since instituted annual training, Title IX training for all staff through Vector Solutions, our online program. Additionally, we've trained staff in darkness to light, and we have also implemented an annual respectful workplace training specifically addressing sexual harassment and grooming awareness. In addition to that, we've provided our reporting procedures to students and parents, and we've also provided, again, messaging, messaging to students and parents that has been streamlined through our reporting form. Now, all that said, the fact that we've done a lot of work to get to where we are does not mean that we don't recognize areas for improvement. And so, we recognize we can get better. We're committed to doing so, and it's important work. So, we will definitely address some things. So, moving forward, we have already started working in conjunction, as you heard earlier, with our Student Advisory Council and the Women and Children's Alliance on a training for our secondary students. And I will tell you that I saw a revised draft of it this morning, based on some of the input from our Student Advisory Council, and it's amazing. Really, really great work. So, we're excited about that. Also, last summer, we contracted with an outside consultant to begin a review process of our procedures and processes. We have committed to sending quarterly, at minimum quarterly reminders to parents and students regarding our reporting procedures. This is particularly important. It would be anyways, but particularly because with some of the messaging that is out right now in the media, there's a risk that that type of messaging could inadvertently dissuade students from reporting. If I'm a student and I hear that I will not be taken seriously, or that the reporting process is scary, that could prevent me from stepping forward. So, we want to send the message very clearly by sending repeated information ongoing to our parents and students, that it's not a scary process. We will take it seriously, and we do want to hear from you. Please, if something has gone on, we want to hear from you on that. We also have realized that it's time for another in-person training for Title IX for our administrators and counselors. And in fact, we will invite the Board of Trustees to attend that training as well. We're going to provide regular updates to the board through administration on the progress of these measures, and you'll notice that I skipped bullet number three. I did that intentionally. And that is because this is one of the things that I think where we can make maybe the biggest impact based on some of the things that we've learned in recent weeks. As an institution, as an organization, we're really good at following through on things. We're really good at following through on these procedures. But what we can get better at is following up with individuals. So, you have victims that come out of this process, they've gone through the process, and we can do a better job of following up routinely with those individuals in a proactive manner, which is why we will be updating the safety plan process, which will formalize our response and follow-through to make sure that we are continuing to check in, to make sure these supportive measures that are ongoing are still effective, and provide additional resources and supportive measures as needed. And again, I just, I saved that for last, because I think it's really important and really addresses a lot of what we've learned in recent weeks. So, with that, we will stand for questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Trustee Oppenheimer?
Thank you for that presentation. You did a great job of explaining. I learned a lot during that. I do have two questions, but I'll start with one. When we think of Title IX, we oftentimes think of a student. How would the investigation change if it were a staff member? Does that look different?
Good question. President Wagers, Trustee Oppenheimer, thank you for the question. So, the short answer is that the process itself, Title IX process itself, would remain the same. The investigative process, all of those procedures would remain the same. What would change if a staff member's involved, that would be the most significant change, would be that there would be a strong likelihood they would be placed on leave pending the investigation. They'd be on paid administrative leave. But the process itself would remain.
Thank you. Just one more question. If a person is involved in a Title IX investigation, whether that be like the claimant, or the respondent, or reporting party, or something like that, are there policies and practices in place that address retaliation?
President Wagers, Trustee Oppenheimer, thank you for the question. Yes, there are definite policies and procedures against retaliation, and that would apply to the complainant, the respondent, as well as any reporting party. If there is any attempted retaliation, we would address that during the investigation process.
Trustee Benyon?
Let me just, I'd like to start by commending all of you for the work you're doing. You know, I think there are sound policies in place, and Title IX is appropriate and good regulation. And for us to be doing everything we can to properly attend to it is really important. You mentioned, which I absolutely agree with, though, they are regulations, and they can feel kind of sterile. And so, the work you're doing and the next steps, and I really appreciate how you were standing in the light, saying, you know, "There's some things we can do with communication that'll improve that." I think that is really important. We're all trying to improve the culture around reporting and encouraging people to report as much as possible, and create the conditions where people feel comfortable coming forward. So, I commend all that as well. Do have a few questions, if I could, real quick. When something is reported that is of a Title IX nature, is it practice that the person, I guess, the family, assuming they're minors, are they notified that they can report this both through the district and criminally, or is it something where we collaborate and they're minors and they have to report criminally because of that?
President Wagers, Trustee Benyon, thanks for the question. So, we notify them of their options, and as the parent and child, they have the opportunity to go out and report that, should they choose to do so. However, on our end, as you point out, they oftentimes are minors, and if there is a clear law that has been broken, we will notify law enforcement ourselves.
Perfect. Thank you. How long, I appreciate the graphic that you showed. I think that was a very helpful graphic. How long does that process typically play out? And do you articulate a timeframe, within six, eight weeks, or how does that look?
Thanks for the question. President Wagers, Trustee Benyon. So, we were asked that question recently in an interview, Becca and I were, and it was difficult for us to answer from a standpoint that there are so many nuances to each of these circumstances that each one takes a bit of a different amount of time. The answer we gave was that on average, we would expect it to take approximately a month for an investigation to run from start to finish and have outcomes.
Great. Thank you. And my last question, this is probably for my own benefit more than anything else. You mentioned a number of times about the informal process. Is that informal process something that needs to be agreed to by both the complainant and the respondent, or for you to head down that road?
Thanks for the question, President Wagers, Trustee Benyon. So, the short answer to that is no, not necessarily. The Director Anderson mentioned the complainant being in the driver's seat a bit. There is a presumption of innocence in Title IX, right? It's one of the reasons we don't just go out and issue consequences right away prior to an investigation being completed. However, when we start to implement supportive measures, we do err on the side of the victim, making sure that, the complainant, making sure that the complainant is comfortable. So, for example, if we were to change a schedule, typically, we would change the schedule of the other party involved, unless it was a case where the complainant was asking to have their schedule changed, for example, and that would be one of the supportive measures that often pops up.
Thank you.
Trustee Langley?
I have a follow-up question to Trustee Benyon's question about the timeline. So, just on the process that we set up, you guys talked about how we decided to go get trained. Can you tell where we got trained, and then how much of that process we created versus how much of it is regulation on the Title IX process?
Okay, I'm going to try to take this one, and then Jason's going to circle back and fix all the things that I mess up. So, the very first group of folks that got trained, got the opportunity to go to Florida, and they were there for about a week. We've had in-house trainers, folks come in, and then we actually collaborated with West data and went, it's called ATICSa. It's one of the organizations that provide. And we went to West data and had the ATICSa trainers come and train a bunch of us also. Did I answer the whole question?
Yeah. Well, actually, the other part is, then, when we implemented our process, how much of that did we create versus how much of it is what we found as best practice?
So, a lot of it came from the trainings that we attended. We did also look at, for instance, Boise State had implemented a policy prior to us, so we used that as a good model. It's always, you know, always good to grab things that are already in existence and not reinvent the wheel.
Okay. And one more question. So, if we have incidents that occur onsite versus offsite, how do we deal with those differently?
Thank you for the question. President Wagers, Trustee Langley. So, that's where the importance of the civil rights grievance policy really comes into play. That's where the, where the importance of the civil rights grievance policy really comes into play. So if there's something that takes place. Within our programs, within our activities. And it is again, related to discrimination, harassment. Or harassment based on sex, gender identity and so forth. Or some type of sexual assault, we'll address that through Title IX. If however, on the other hand, it was something that took place, for example. Outside of school activities on a weekend over the summer, whatever the case may be. And they are, when kids return to school, it's now having an impact on the student's education. We would address that through the civil rights grievance policy. So that we could put supportive measures in place and also any, any consequences that would be appropriate for perpetrator in that type of event.
Follow-up is on the same topic.
On the same, just. On the same topic, it is on the same topic. It's a follow-up kind of to what you said is. Then if, how, at what point is it a police matter versus a school matter? I guess if it's. That onsite versus offsite, et cetera.
Well, so. Those things can run parallel. So for instance, if something happened during the summer. That could very well be something that law enforcement's dealing with, but our whole lens is. It may have happened during the summer, but if it's impacting your ability to access your education, then we're going to step in and, and. Take action on that piece of that puzzle.
So what I'm hearing is we are implementing. Responses to provide education and the, the. Stuff about the legal actions is happening. That's not us.
President Wagers.
Superintendent Dennis. Yeah, I, I think it's important to understand that. None of the Title IX policies or procedures precludes us from being mandatory reporters. We are mandatory reporters within anything that involves. Breaking the law with those kinds of situations. So we can. Go ahead and do some of these things, report and still hold our investigation or within Title IX. And we do that in, in some of these cases, a lot of those kinds of things happen. Where it's a parallel track. I think the other thing to, to understand is, is that there are times where these things are reported to the police first. And then to us. And so an investigation could already be happening with the police department. We're brought into the loop and now we started Title IX investigation. So I think it's important to understand it works both ways.
President Wagers. Trustee Osmundari.
Thank you, Director Hutchinson and Director Anderson for this presentation. I'm curious about the training y'all are putting on for, for students. Will that be a Title IX specific training or will that address things like consent as well?
President Wagers, Trustee Rajamandari, it will actually, it, we do actually have a lot of things about consent and like. Dating and healthy relationships, but. The training that we're adding does involve that as well, but it does put kind of the. Focus on the healthy boundaries and noticing when folks are trying to kind of that boundary invasion. So it's. Especially in partnership with the WCA, we've had a good. Discussion around like what it means to be in a healthy relationship and healthy dating. This I think adds that extra level of. Healthy boundaries with perhaps like adults or people that you're in relationships with that aren't dating relationships. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And how will that be administered to, to students? Will that be in?
Good question. So this year, our plan is to deliver it and each school will probably make a little bit of a different choice, but. Our plan is to send it home to parents so they can see it. And then probably deliver it in a class like, for instance, English. That most students have in their schedule. So that we just kind of hit it across the board the first time out.
Thank you. President Wagers, another question.
Go ahead, Trustee Osmundari.
Thank you. I'm, I'm curious about the criminality component of all this. I'm, I'm trying to. Imagine a scenario where someone would be reported under a Title IX or civil rights grievance that wouldn't be a crime that we'd have to report to, to the police. Could you walk me through that?
Good question. President Wagers, Trustee Rajamandari. Trying to think of how to answer this without giving any specific examples that might inadvertently. Step into a previous case or a current one. Generally speaking. If, if. Somebody is, is experiencing sexual assault, for example. Something that is, that is that egregious and that obvious of a broken law, we're going to report that right away ourselves. There are times where a, a student. Where a student could experience something that, that maybe there's some name-calling involved or some teasing that is certainly not appropriate. That. When we initially look into it. As whether or not it's even a Title IX case, that it might not be an obvious broken law at that point in time. We still would make the student aware and their parents aware that they have the right to, to file a complaint elsewhere should they choose to do so. And if at any point during the investigative process, we determine that a law was broken, then we would report it as well.
That makes sense. Thank you. And President Wagers, follow up on that last one.
Trustee Osmundari.
I'm curious about. How, I mean, obviously mandatory complaint, or excuse me, mandatory. Reporter laws are valuable, but often contentious because. You know, it makes the, it often puts the complainant in a position where they are no longer in control, right? They've reported to the school. And now it's being escalated to the police. And I'm curious how we're making students and parents and potential complainants. Across our district aware of our mandatory reporting requirement.
Good question, Trustee Rajamandari. So. I would say, I'm just thinking of like really a, a very individualized response to this. So. A student comes in and reports to a counselor, hey, I had an issue. Counselors are, you know, usually the very first line of defense because they're somebody that is a trusted adult. A counselor right off the bat is going to. Give that student a sense of what they have to report. You know, so hey, we're going to go into this conversation. We're going to talk about this. Here are the things that as a mandatory reporter, I would be passing along. But I think also they have a really strong sense of responsibility that then they're going to, they're going to walk alongside that student. So that if there's, for instance, I'll just use an example. I know very often that the counselor. You know, will contact the parents. They will sit in on a conversation. If a school resource officer becomes involved. They're not leaving that student alone for the journey. They're trying to be alongside them to help out.
Thank you. So that, that's upfront, though. Student walks in counselor immediately, I am a mandatory reporter.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there is a poster too.
All right, Trustee Greeley.
Thank you, President Wagers. I appreciate the presentation and understanding the process. I believe very strongly that our administrators care about the well-being and safety of our students. I believe the Board does as well. I also believe that our administration is following the proper process. As Trustee Bunyan said, Bunyan said it, it can be very sterile. And I think the key piece that I'm learning is that. You are creating the state, the safety plan for our students. So that they feel heard, they feel supported and that they have. Tools that, that will help support them. And so I appreciate just the fact that you're looking beyond doing the process. And looking at how best to support our students in this.
Trustee Langley.
I also really appreciated this presentation because it refocuses the fact that. What we are doing. Aside from what we must do as mandatory reporters. But within Title IX and within our formal and informal processes. We, we must provide education to all parties that are involved. If there's, if it's two parties of students. And I'm not talking about staff members, but if it's two parties of students. That we have to find a remedy that allows both students or both parties of students. To continuously access successfully their education. And that's what this process has been about. So I love that we're going to go to that next step now and think about the emotional toll that that may take for a longer time. After the fact, but I am very grateful for the clarification that I understand now that we are. We are called in policy and law to continue to allow access to education for all parties.
And if I can add, Trustee Langley, one thing that we didn't mention, but that is very much a piece of this puzzle is. If in any part of this process. A claimant wants something different in terms of interim measures, that's something we can absolutely do. So a good example is sometimes. Someone will be through, go through a traumatic event and at the beginning they'll be like, I'm fine. It's fine. And if I see the person in the hall, I'm totally fine. But maybe three or four weeks later and they're not fine. And that's a piece of this that even though it is kind of a path and we have federal laws to follow. We always will implement a supportive measure, even if that person thought they were going to be good and they're not good six weeks later. So I just forgot to mention that. So I wanted to mention that.
Superintendent Dennis.
Yeah. President Wagers, trustees, I, I, I want to just take a second here and first of all, thank Becca and, and Jason. For the presentation. I, I know how hard they worked to put this together for all of you. And really on some short notice to be able to get you guys the information. I, I kind of want to reinforce a couple of key points here. School districts our size. Should never fall into the trap of compliance. Okay. That's the minimum that we can do. And I think particularly in the Boise School District, we hold ourselves to a, to a higher standard. We don't hold ourselves to a compliance standard. I, I think although you've seen the legal basis tonight, this, and that's really what the presentation was. This is what we do. This is the process we use. I think you have heard both Director Anderson and Director Hutchinson talk about the fact. That it can feel institutionalized and it can feel cold at times. And, and that's by design. Unfortunately, the way the Title IX is written, it is by design to be that way. But I think we can all agree that our culture has to be about the people we serve. Okay, and we need to continue to grow in that area. Because our families and our, and our kids. Need to be heard, seen and safe. And so what I want the Board to understand is we're committed to going beyond the minimum. In how we are dealing with these issues. Irrespective of where we are currently, we are going to get better in the human side of this. So I think that's important for the Board to know. And I wanted to make sure that I said that upfront because we're, we were kind of dancing around some of those issues. And I wanted you to hear directly from me about that.
Thank you, Superintendent Dennis. I do have a couple of questions and then, but. I, I guess, you know, following up on what you just said, and this isn't a question, this is a comment, I don't know, Trustee Bunyan, several. It's that humanizing. You know, to be a victim is terrible. And it's an incredible process to go through and then to try and report that and relive it and relive it and relive it. And I was very happy to hear you say we had trusted adults. Following that victim through the process. And that humanizes because it allows them to have somebody at least next to them. That can take that through that process. And so that was a wonderful thing for me to hear. And just to reiterate, so. At the end of an investigation, all the parties hear the resolution of, I mean, the two parties anyway, or three or four or whatever, you know. They hear the resolution of the, I mean, they all understand the resolution of the investigation.
President Wagers, yes, that is correct. They all, they all receive a notice of outcome.
Now, how, and, and here's where I think we get convoluted sometimes. People like, oh, if they reported to me, I need to know. Or if I heard from somebody else, I want to know. Do those people have a right to know that investigation?
President Wagers, you're, you're addressing or regarding, regarding the reporting party, correct?
Yeah, well, I'm talking about, let's say somebody, yeah, somebody got reported to or somebody knew them and they heard about it. Does anybody else have a right to that investigation?
No, the claimant, President Wagers, the claimant and the respondent. And sometimes that's more than one, as you indicated, but the claimant and the respondent who are directly involved are the parties who receive notice of, of outcome. Nobody else has.
I'm sure that can be frustrating to other people in the community, other people in school. Kind of a tough thing to go through when you feel like something has happened and you don't know what the answer is. When, so our, when we do an investigation. Typically, I think most of our investigations are internal investigations. Do we also do external investigations where we bring in outside people to investigate?
President Wagers, another good question, just to go backwards for just a minute. So the part of, part of that. Who is notified is not just legal, but also trying to minimize the footprint of the investigation itself and the impact, knowing that. Your point earlier, the impact it has on the reporting party just to put themselves out there to report or sorry, or to, if it's the claimant. Or the complainant. That alone is difficult on them. And so we're trying to minimize the footprint. With regard to your second question. Can you repeat that, please?
Oh, inside versus external one?
Thank you, President Wagers. So we do conduct many of these investigations in-house. We have an investigator to do that. However, if warranted, we do have the ability to go outside and bring in an, an outside investigator.
Thank you. And, and just a couple more comments. I mean, this is something we take very seriously. I know we take it very seriously from a board level. And we definitely challenge our superintendent administrators to take care of. All our kids and all our staff. You know, and this is part of how we do that. We take care of people. This. All our administration, you got to remember, everybody, but I think Mr. Skinner is an educator. They've been in the, they've been in the classrooms. They've touched those kids. And they don't want anything to happen. So I guess that's when it's a little frustrating to me is when it gets recast maybe slightly differently that way. The challenge of humanizing, I think, is something we will have an ongoing issue with. But I do challenge you all to humanize. And obviously you sound very committed to doing that is how do we protect those victims along the way? That is, you know, that, that's, I think, the toughest thing about this. Is you have to give a safe place. And if you don't have that safe place, it's tough. The district is very serious about it and we, we have allocated funds for your training. I remember when you went to your first Title IX training. We had just finished up a National School Board Association meeting and you spent the rest of the week. In Title IX training going, I don't know why, what are we getting into here? And, and it opened your eyes and you came back from that and said. We got a lot of work to do. And you did the work. Part of the reason why Mr. Skinner is here. Is Title IX. I mean, we need help. We need legal counsel on staff. To handle these type of things. And we treat this very seriously. At least I know from a board perspective, all the conversations we've had over the past, you know, six years about this is we are willing to invest the time, effort and funds. To take care of our kids and to take care of our staff. That's probably enough from Dave. Any, anybody else? Any other trustee comment? Superintendent Dennis?
Well, I just wanted to thank you, President Wagers, for those comments and, and actually all of the comments from the Board so far. I, you are correct in that we take this very seriously and will continue to. The challenge of the emotional and the humanizing of this, I think. I don't know that you ever perfect that. And I think that we, if we ever start thinking we have or missing the point. So I want to just reiterate that we will continue to work on that. We will continue to get better at that and we will never be perfect at that. But we will continue to strive towards that perfection as best we can. So rest assured, we are working on that.
It's about the gains that we're making. The incremental changes. I mean, we've done so many incremental changes. And kudos to the administration and the entire district, all the teachers in the classroom. That is, you know, that's our first place. And then the counselors and all that. We have gained so much. I think in helping, you know, that, making that work. Do we still have work to do? Yes, yes, we do. But. Every day, every classroom, every counselor, this is how we do it. And every student needs to be taken care of and taken serious. Any other? Comments from trustees or? Trustee Gregory?
I did, just one thing came to mind. That. This is. A new day from 20 years ago. 25 years ago, 30 years ago. But thank goodness, we have some resources. That are coming to the forefront in terms of mental health and access to, to therapies and counselors. That our community is coming forward with partnerships. That provide, for instance, the training with the WCA, but also St. Luke's and St. Alice, who are providing. Medical care as well as counseling services, et cetera. Those things. Those things were scarce and they're becoming more available and especially the access are in schools for families so that that educational piece is not fractured because, you know, we have to throw everything out the window while we deal with this. It's trying to keep life moving forward in as smooth a way as possible. So, you know, we should recognize the interaction that we have with lots of community partners and the interests and the opportunities we have to help with those supportive measures as well as the pillars of support that we are developing in our mental health program. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Trustee Gregory. Any other? Very none. Thank you, Director Anderson. Thank you, Director Hutchinson. I know, you know, this is, this is hard work. It's not, it's not what we think of when we go to school. But it's important that we have a safe place for all our kids to go to school. Thank you.